We are now going to begin our work session as always, please silence your devices so we can stay focused. And if you will bow your heads with me. Father, we're eternally grateful for another opportunity to be together and to serve the students of Alabama. Lord, we pray today that our words would be clear, that our minds would be undistracted, that we would be completely focused on this robust agenda, Father, and that we would seek to serve you in all that we do and say today. Father, there are so many competing voices now in our world, and we pray for complete integrity in all of our work and that we would show that our focus always is for the best of our students. We thank you again for the opportunity to lead. We give you all the glory in Jesus' name, amen. We'll begin with item number one, the resolution to approve the Educator Preparation Program, University of North Alabama, Dr. Hampton, will you be?
Yes ma'am, good morning and thank you, Ms. Witz. Good morning, board members. We have today joining us Dr. Laura Johnson, who's going to come and tell you more about the programs. We had an opportunity to visit University of North Alabama, and honestly, we had a wonderful visit. As I've stated before, this has been an excellent experience to have the opportunity to learn more about our programs, but also to meet people that are behind the scenes many times working, who we don't get an opportunity to speak to and to speak to the campus. So without further ado, I'm going to give you the handouts and I turn it over to Dr. Laura Johnson.
Thank you so much, and I have to thank Dr. Hampton and Dr. Hearn for their excellent leadership. We are so grateful as an EPP that they walk alongside us and support us in being the best shape we can be. And I commend my colleague from the University of Alabama for the beautiful gift bags today. But the guests I did bring today are the wonderful students that we are turning out as teachers to impact P-12. So we thank you for this opportunity to talk about our programs, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think one of the strengths of our programs is just the powerful partnerships that we enjoy, not only with our local school districts, but with other agencies in our area. We have students that go to the Tennessee Valley Museum of Art and conduct lessons for students who are there for field trips. We have a pop art partnership, which is an SOR reading clinical in a local school. We have secondary ad immersion labs, so that those students have many opportunities to teach prior to internship in the field. We have an assistive technology workshop that we offer, so that our students have opportunities to work with special needs students and use innovative assistive technology with those. And a very special arts festival, just to name a few. We have STEM camps, we have so many. But we are so thankful for the partners and how they co-construct our curriculum, our assessments, and our field experiences with us to help us make the best impact that we can make on P-12 performance. We have the state's only lab school, Killby Laboratory School, so we are always so thankful for that opportunity to engage with our students in instructional learning experiences.
Excuse me, say that again slowly, what year are you, the only one that has?
We have the only laboratory school in the state of Alabama. So we have Killby, and it's pre-K through grade six.
Okay, thank you.
If you would allow me, if I could just also add that we have a new program at UNA that started in our college bed, but is now institutional called Fostering Success. We created a program to support students who come from foster care background, and we were able to, we were recently awarded a federal AmeriCorps grant. We are the only university in the state to have an AmeriCorps program, which allows people to engage in service to support these students. We're really excited about it, and you have a handout about it. But if you ever have a chance to visit UNA, we would like for you to come and meet our students and meet our faculty and allow you to experience what UNA is all about.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have questions?
I'm grateful you're my neighbor, I live in Athens, and our people, what do you do? Great program, thank you ma'am.
Thank you, we're grateful for you.
Did you draw numbers?
I'm sorry.
Right, I'm sorry, numbers.
Okay, no, number of students, you have enrolled undergraduate and graduate.
We just graduated about 136 for initial programs in the most recent semester, and then we have about 250 enrolled currently in our masters and EBS programs.
That's great, thank you.
I had a quick question, because of your location, do you keep up with if your graduates go across state lines and teach in neighboring states? Do you?
Some do, we do track that. Most of them teach in Alabama, but we do have some who go to Tennessee and Mississippi. And a lot of our students come from those communities and may go back home to teach.
Thank you. Anything else, board members?
We truly appreciate you making the trip down to be with us today, and thank you for what you're doing and working with Dr. Hampton to prepare your future candidates.
We appreciate you so much and the guidance and the leadership, and we are so thankful that you have innovative leadership for our state and the successes that we recently had with the literacy act really make us feel so proud to be part of what's happening right now, so thank you.
Thank you. Personally, I'd rather buy a CT5.
Thank you.
Dr. Hampton, who's next?
Once again, thank you, and we have Angela Shirley, who's going to be joining us from Auburn University. We also had a wonderful visit there. Even though all of our campuses are quite different in terms of the things we learn at each one of them, we appreciate the uniqueness and their approach to educating our campus in Alabama so that they can go out and impact somewhere. So without further ado, I turn it over to Ms. Shirley.
So my name is Angela Shirley, and this is a new experience for me. I am here because Dr. David Crowe and Dr. Jared Russell both have previous commitments, so they asked me just to come in their place. Dr. Crowe did provide some information on a handout. I do want to thank Dr. Hampton and everyone who did come to Auburn University for our work meetings. It did give us some areas that we could grow, where we could find some areas of continuous improvement. I personally am more involved in clinical placements of our students and school partnerships and some of the certification piece at the very end. But I do know a little bit about the program, all of the rest of the program, so I don't know, if there are any questions for me, I will try my best. And also, he did not send me with a goodie bag like Alabama brought, so he's getting a check mark for that, so.
He was that size, wasn't he?
Yes, well. I'll make sure he brings you a goodie bag.
I do know, and I thank you so much for providing the chart with the Barksdale recommendation and then the progress noted. I'm asked often by members of legislature, is higher ed paying attention to that? And how are you measuring that? And I appreciate the fact that you put this in writing for us today because it can sort of feel like we're making progress, but you know, it's very broad statements.
But there's nothing concrete, yes.
Yes, so I do appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, yeah.
Any questions?
Any other questions? More evil?
Thanks, nice cheering, but where?
Well, let's join though.
Well, I appreciate you allowing me to be here and to stand in their place to give this information. Appreciate all of our partners, just like she mentioned earlier, we couldn't do it without our school partners, we can do it without our state partners. And I am a former, I actually graduated from Auburn University in elementary education back in the day, and I love what I do because it allows me to give back to not only my university, but to also give to educators.
Where did you teach before you went back?
Well, I kind of taught all over the place. I was in Mississippi for a while, but we won't talk about that.
No.
But we came back, yes.
Well, we appreciate it, it's not easy stepping in. Thank you, Ms. Shirley, for that information. Dr. Mackey, what's next?
So next, we go to our social studies courses study. And I guess Dr. Busman, Mr. Snell, if y'all would come up. While they come, I'll do a quick introduction of this. You remember last year, we had asked for this, and I appreciate last year Dr. Coke came, we talked about science. This is your Mr. Snell, again, as I said earlier, I know it, this is a busy time, and it's hard for superintendents to get away for a day to do this. But I think it helps, I always felt, and I don't speak for board members, but I think some of you felt the same way, that it's hard to wait to November, and then we get this huge notebook, and all this work's been done, and we're asked to digest it in, you know, three weeks and then be ready for a vote. And so I've asked them, you know, our folks, Dr. Busman, Mr. Meadows, Andy Meadows, Shawn Stevens leads all that, oversees all that work for us. I was looking for him back on the back row there, but we're, I just asked them, you know, let's think about, can we do kind of interim updates? And where we are in the development, so it doesn't all come at the end. Last year, I got lots of positive comments from board members about doing that for science. So this year, when we started the process, we said, okay, we're going to do that again, so. So here they are. I've not talked to them, so I don't know if Mr. Snell drops some bombshells on us, I'm in trouble, mate. Ron Snell, superintendent in Geneva City.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Like everyone else, a little bit nervous sitting here. I feel like I've been called to the principal's office. I have been one fourteen and a half years, as a matter of fact, which is, in dog years, that's about thirty-eight. I was a principal a long time. I want to let you know what a pleasure it is to be here to talk to you. So the purpose of this, obviously, is to give you an update on the drafting of the 2024 version of the Alabama Course of Study in the area of social studies. I would be remiss if I didn't begin by telling you, Dr. Mackey, what an incredible staff you have. You know they're good, you know they're smart, and when you work so closely with them, Dr. Busman, Pathy Jones, Shawn Stevens, Melissa Shields. It's been really eye-opening to see just how hard and how professional they are as a staff and how central they are to the process. I particularly would be remiss if I didn't draw attention to Dr. Busman's ability to reach consensus, to consider all perspectives, to put it in nuggets that even I can understand, and to move the whole thing forward. We're in really, really good hands, and you should be proud. I also would be remiss if I did not mention the incredible committee that has been put together. And here's, I guess, what makes me so proud, is that they come from all corners of the state. They're professional educators, they're museum people, they're higher ed people. And the atmosphere in the room is incredible, the ability to come together and to understand how important the work we're doing is. I believe the current course of study has been in place for fourteen years. About fourteen years, so assuming this one won't last that long, but if it does, can we create a document that's worthy of fourteen years? And so, you know, I want you to know that the group of individuals and educators from each of your districts are really exceptional, smart, smart people who really understand the work. We've done some culture building. We've stayed and visited the Legacy Museum, we've visited the Archives, we've gone to eat together, and the whole idea is that this is not just something we do part-time, but for the next year, we're going to be a team. We're going to get this thing done, we're going to get a good document that you guys can be proud of, that the state can be proud of, that people in every corner of the state can be proud of, and get that thing across the finish line in a way that values and honors their time. So it's been awesome, and before I even started on everything else, I just wanted to say thank you to them. I do want to say that this particular update will be somewhat shy on specifics like actual standards, and the reason is that the draft comes out in August, and we have to be careful not to reveal too much early until that draft is in its form to be opened up publicly. So the idea here would be to give you an overview of the milestones we've hit, some of the roadblocks, and just how we've managed that process. So I do want to say that on the front end. So the first thing you need to know is that we have looked and been very purposeful in engaging the entire state in the conversation. And that began before the committee ever met. We began to look at what people have to say. We've obviously gotten comments on the current course of study. That would be a smart thing to do, as well as communicating with stakeholders around the state, those civic organizations and those people who have an interest in social studies education. And so they know we're revising this document, and so we've made sure that before we start and as we are going, we visit their comments and make sure we're very intentional in that. We have been collecting feedback, we did that again at the beginning. Once we let the draft go in August, we'll then receive feedback. And then we will have another one around November in which we'll get feedback. And that gives us an opportunity to see if there's anything that we need to do in terms of the structure, if there's anything we need to tighten up and explain better. So it gives us a chance all along the way. This is really the most important part of this particular slide, and that is that we've been very intentional internally to make sure that we have the committee members to continuously revisit that feedback. So it's not like, well, here's what people have said, and then we just start off down the road by ourselves. That as we are going in the building of these standards, they're continuously cross-checking that feedback and the submitted commentary. And so that we're always very intentional about including that feedback into the standards and into what we're doing. So that's been really, really important to us, a very deliberate process. On the next couple of slides, I just want to tell you what the committee members are saying, because we collect information back as we, each meeting, we say, hey, how do we do? What do we need to do better, you know? And so this is from them, not from us, and it is solicited, and then we asked them what to say, but we did not solicit a particular comment. And just some of them going, great, public and entity feedback has been consulted. We've considered the commentary of all groups, and then this is the part I really like. This is a quote from them, "We value the continued feedback." And so it's not just in the background, but they value what they're being told. And I think that's super, super important for listening to the constituents around the state, so. Next is a summary of the research. So the process is, we look back and we get feedback, we include that feedback in the document, and then we also do research, because it's really, really important that this document reflects whatever the current scholarship is. What are the trends in the scholarship that are true? Fourteen years, things change, right? So we've been very mindful of that and making sure that that's included since the last writing. By way of example, we've been careful to make sure that we cover NAEP standards. We've made sure that we look at the AP framework, really, really important around this state as it grows exponentially. So we just want to make sure our students have the best chance to be successful. And we know those are two checkpoints that we need to be mindful of. And where they get checked, right? The grade that they get checked in. So the committee has looked at model standards, reports, documents from nonprofits, and they've all been part of our research. I do would be, need to mention the Fordham Institute, because the states that we've looked at, all the common, one of the common features that is that the Fordham Institute rates them very highly. An interesting fact that you probably know, but is worth restating, is that Alabama has an A by the Fordham Institute, and that's kind of a North Star for us. We want to make sure that we meet those standards as well. So those states are important to look at. Additionally, we've made sure that we look at the DOD's standards, one, because they're really well-written, I mean, and that's an important piece, but it's also because we have such a large population of military families that are going to move. It's part of it, right? I moved every three years, growing up, because dad got transferred. So, and most of the time, my dad told us where they were going. Sometimes he did, but I always found them. So, but one of the things we want to make sure, I was not serious, my family never left. I was impoverished, and then they left me and did not tell me where they were going. So we want to make sure that the states that border us, right? We know that there's a lot of transfer. So while we cannot ensure that we line up completely on all sides of us with which grade they teach a particular subject in, we certainly want to make sure that our standards are robust enough to make sure that transition as well. And then where we can to make sure that we teach the standards that are somewhat commensurate with the states around us. So it's an overarching goal of ours, or it's at least a part of our research. So we also want to, you know, there's a changing population, they shift back and forth. And so I think probably the most, so I want to read, just real quick review. We looked at, we've looked at the evaluation, we have looked at current research, and then we've developed what I think are, to the next, are you, to the next? We put together what is a few driving goals. So these are those overarching goals that have driven the work on a day-to-day basis. And I say day-to-day, I do want to say this, get this. We only have met during a few days out of a month, but there is very few days since we started this work in February that that document hasn't been worked on. Would you agree with that, Dr. Busman?
Hundred percent.
He continuously has to open that document because there's always someone on it. It is a collaborative model, we're able to do that with the technology, and it is continuously changing. And so I need you to know, this has been, while we only meet a few days out of the month, it is not something that just happens in those months, it happens all year, all month long. So the overarching goals, the things that we really want to pay, one of the things is civic education. We want to make sure we address civic education, you know, we have the civics test now. And so rather than having it in a particular place in the course of study, in a particular grade, actually, is what we're talking about, is that we embed those standards as we move, so that it doesn't become so onerous on one particular grade. And so civics education has become, is a point of emphasis for us. We want to place an emphasis on what to know. So a standard is what should you learn, but also how to know it. And so that's the skills framework. So we are really mindful to pick really content-rich standards, but also to make sure we embed, how do you know? How do you learn that? And that's the social studies skills. And that's really important, because we've worked alongside the ARI folks, the OSI specialist, ELA specialist, because what we know is, research indicates that social studies education can facilitate the development of that vocabulary and that content knowledge you need to be a literate student. And this is particularly true at the younger grades, at the elementary grades, where you really have to embed social studies. And so I need to say this, because this is really key, because our elementary folks have been just, you know, I'm a high school guy, he's a high school guy, I mean, that's what we talk, you know, history in high school, we're the only ones that matter. So, but in elementary, it has been remarkable to watch them work with the literacy. And so, but I need to say this, our subject can build literacy skills, but we need those literacy skills to build our subject, right? I mean, we're hand in hand, it is not separate. A literate student is a good social studies student. So it behooves us to make sure that we support the literacy efforts. And so that has been a driving force in what we do, particularly in the younger grades, but certainly all the way through, so that's an important point. We certainly want to make sure that we continue to build a love for history, American history and world history. We want to build those, but it's been a real point of emphasis that we don't ignore Alabama history. And again, you're talking about a subject that can be relegated to a single grade level, and we want to bring it into the other grades. And so there's been an intentionality to drop Alabama history throughout our courses so that we can do that in more than one grade. And I think that's super important. And then, of course, to be very clear and concise, you can write really long standards, we don't want that, we want it simple. So civic education, what to know, how to know, the skills framework, literacy skills, clear and concise, and a love of Alabama history. At this point, which will, nobody better cheer, I'm going to stop, and I am going to turn this over to Dr. Busman. And he is truly the axis around which this thing spins. And so I want him to walk through the timeline of our meetings really quickly to tell you where we were, where we are, and then where we're going. So, all right, Dr. Busman?
Thank you, board members. It's been a pleasure to be working on this important document. It's been a pleasure working with Mr. Snell. As you tell, Mr. Snell brings a whole level of enthusiasm and passion for the subject that we just have fed on. He's been one who gets the committee excited every day, who helped facilitate the idea of us meeting outside of our meetings to build communities. It's been great working with him. We started off the year with the great ice storm and had to cancel our January meeting, at which point we met for the first time in February. We were very purposeful at looking at the research, looking at the feedback we'd received from teachers, from organizations, from the public. And so we really spent February and March overall digesting what has changed since the last drafting the social studies document, which was 2009, 2010. So a lot has changed, NAEP has changed, AP has changed. NAEP has changed, AP has changed, other states around us have changed. And so we spent much of February, March processing that information to make sure that we were working purposefully with a knowledge of what has occurred to help us move forward. So February 5th and 6th, much of that time processing, meeting each other, building community, just like a classroom, you want to have a successful classroom climate to work in, and so we worked through that. March 5th and 6th, we spent that time then beginning to really take that research, what did we learn, and what, how can that inform us as a committee, and most importantly, the state of Alabama, how to maintain our leadership in social studies education. So March 5th and 6th, that, that vision started really kind of coming together, and so the last two times we've met, April 16th and 17th, as well as April 30th through May 2nd, really began the initial groundwork of what the, will this document say, what will it look like, what do we want to communicate, what is our philosophy behind this document? We're working in grade-based teams, as well as kind of grade band teams, we have a, kind of a front matter team working on the overall introduction, the narrative, and, and so we've been very busy working through that through those April meetings, as well as that April 30th through the May 2nd meeting. As Mr. Snell suggested, or mentioned, that our teachers, our, our secondary, our post-secondary educators, our museum experts, our governor appointees have been very deliberative in the process, speaking with one another, and very deliberate as well in being in their documents, working both when we're here, as well as a secretly from home, from work. It's been phenomenal to see these documents evolve in the meantime. We do have some upcoming meeting dates this summer, June 25th through 27th, we'll meet again right next door in the, the other P103 room. At that point, we're really working to fine-tune what has been written. We have a, a checklist put together that committee members will be going through, and kind of purposely, every standard, every substandard, every word, because words matter. What words are we choosing to use, what are we communicating to not only teachers, to students, and the public in our document? July 16th, 18th will once again be really polishing that draft with the anticipation of having the draft out throughout the month of August for public review. And as we've done throughout, that review that we bring back from August, whether it be public, whether it be expert reviewers, other teachers, we're going to be very purposeful in maintaining our focus on hearing what other Alabamians have to say about that, and making sure that this is a course of study, that it represents the voice of all Alabamians. So, public review in August, September, and October, really consuming that feedback and making sure that that feedback is represented in the document that we hope to put before you on November 14th. Our, our plan, we are straight ahead and, and working diligently to make sure that we have that draft for you November 14th, and hopefully an anticipated vote on December 12th. And that's where we stand right now.
Fantastic. Board members, do you have questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I just like what I heard about you understanding that our public is becoming much more involved and much more engaged in reading these standards. So I appreciate that you're keeping that arena, as well as the educators, you know, because they are involved and they want to be involved, and so for you to keep that in the forefront, forefront of your mind is, I thought it was great.
Yes, sir.
And, and I do, I have to echo what she just said, that I think that's crucial, and as you already know, obviously, when you get to the end, it makes the process so much easier, so that you don't have everyone complaining about how they didn't have enough time to digest this. And so, yes, and so those who have contacted me over the last couple of years, of how, when are we going to address this, or how are we going to, and it's made it very easy, and I've shared this document right here, just with the process, and I'm just sorry that you all are just so boring. And you're just so, you know, I can tell you don't really enjoy this process, but you, it's a high compliment for me to say that you remind me of one of my favorite social studies teachers in junior high school, is what we used to call it, Mr. C.P. Everett, who brought history and, everything was alive, and that was part of the reason why I got involved in programs like legislature and all, all those things that allow you to participate, because a teacher obviously makes a difference, and, and, and he did, and obviously, you make a tremendous difference, so I appreciate it.
One question I have, I've heard you say that you are addressing Alabama history throughout the entire curriculum, is there a separate Alabama history course of study?
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll maintain that, but the importance that we're seeing is that it's not isolated in one grade. And, and certain parts of Alabama history, to ensure that age-appropriate, is traditionally taught in elementary school, but also make sure that we revisit, even within the framework of world history, understanding the indigenous cultures and, and people that were here before exploration, making sure that we represent that even within our world history courses.
Because I know some high schools will teach a, an elective Alabama history course, so I, I was wondering, will they still have that opportunity to do that?
At, at this point, we, in the current course of study, there's not an Alabama history high school elective standards, but that is something we can explore.
But thank you all for not just wanting our core, but they want to, they, they offer an elective course, but it doesn't replace one of our core.
Did you mind this before, I know we offer two years of US history.
Yes, sir. So the administrative code requires one world history, two US histories, a half-credit of government, and half-credit of economics. And while we're talking about Alabama connections, it's not just Alabama history connections, but we're making sure that we have Alabama geography, Alabama civics, Alabama economics connections in those courses as well.
So you have a heavy dose of geography across the board, I hope, because I've been amazed at how people don't even know.
It's been a point of conversation.
They're all country, much less in the other countries.
And Dr. Reynolds?
Yes, I appreciate it. I've served on the course of study a few years ago, and it's an art issue, it's great that you have the technology to share as you go along, but financial literacy is another mandate in the legislature, is, are you embedding that in the social studies curriculum, or how are you addressing that?
So with, with the new financial literacy law, and the emphasis of teaching financial literacy in the career preparedness class, we realize that also, especially when you look at elementary social studies, and how elementary social studies is interdisciplinary, making sure that we have that emphasis from the beginning of financial literacy.
And I was on a note on that, where you had literacy, the importance of, you had financial, I saw data and some other things that, as you said, if we can't read and comprehend, the history doesn't make a significant difference. So I like the fact that that's highlighted in how you've broken it out. Looking forward to the final document and the draft in August.
Ready to give birth. Anything else?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
I do want to say, just a point of personal pride, that Dr. Busman is extremely humble, but he is a former Alabama History Teacher of the Year. He led a huge, huge project with high school students interviewing veterans in East Alabama that received enormous recognition. It was a true gift to the, to the families of those veterans. Some of them are no longer with us, and, and some of them still are, and so I just want to thank you for being willing to come to the department and step out of the high school classroom, because I know that's where your heart, you know, really is. But you are truly impacting the entire state and not just one small isolated area, so I just want to say I'm very proud.
Thank you.
We don't want Mr. Snell to escape in Florida, you're too close to the city.
Auburn cannot have him back, so.
He can have his wife here, it's been not him.
That's right. Thank you very much.
So next is arts. We have Andy Meadows, which you all know well, of course, does all of our arts education here for us, and Dr. Quentin Lee, Superintendent Talladega City. And so this is, while they're getting seated, catching their breath, I'll remind you, this is a little unusual, because, you know, we got, as I mentioned, social studies was way behind, and we're finally getting, we are, when we get social studies done, we are, we will finally be back on cycle, and all of our courses studied, all, all of them would have been redeveloped in the last six years, which is a monumental task for our staff. That, so we're, so now, so we're doing arts and social studies at the same time, that's a lot of work on our staff, because they're doing two pretty big endeavors at the same time. And I remind you, we did science last year, we normally try not to do core subjects two years in a row, so we're doing science textbooks, that'll come another time. At the same time, we're doing social studies. And I know in people's minds, people listening in the, you know, cyber world, here in the audience, they're like, well, you know, you can do science and do social studies at the same time. I'm telling you, I could take you up to the third floor, it's a very tiny staff, they're doing all this, and they're also managing all the, you know, PE waivers and, and medical waivers, and they're managing all of that at the same time while we're doing this. So I just want to say a big thank you again to Dr. Busman, and Mr. Stevens, and Dr. Shields, the whole team, Kathy Jones jumps in as part of that. But this time, we're going to focus particularly on arts, it's K-12, it's, it's one that reaches lots of others, because y'all know from the music programs we've done, and the, the great Superintendent Arts show that we put together, Andy leads, that we have lots of connections with multiple arts agencies through this too. And so thank you to Dr. Lee for his work in leading this, and I don't know who's going to start on this one. I'll start. Dr. Lee, start.
Good morning, everyone. I think we're going to take everything that social studies said, and just substitute the word, and put music and fine arts, and we'll be fine. But it's just an honor and a joy to be here in this space with you all this morning to chair this committee. I'll start off to Dr. Matthew, thank you for your consistent leadership in the state of Alabama. Thank you to our school board for just making sure that you keep boys and girls in Alabama first, that's the, the best thing that any of us can do, and it unites us all. I'm very thankful for the staff here at the Alabama State Department of Education for all of their help, they are the best professionals that we could have, I believe that we could really run Washington DC, here in Alabama, with the level of professions, professionalism and proficiency that we have here in this state. I'm very thankful to all of the educators and stakeholders that even make up the committee for fine arts. I'm here today in this seat because of fine arts. Growing up, my mom, we had six, she had six boys, and her senior year, or my senior year, she said, if you want to go to school, you got to get a scholarship, we don't have any money. Well, I know it doesn't look like it, but I'm not an NBA basketball player, I was good at band, band was my thing. I was able to make all-state band, and I was able to get a full ride, a full band scholarship to Alabama A&amp;M University, based upon fine arts. So I'm sitting here as a product of something that I have the opportunity to help design, and it has been just a joy. So my love for music was due to a strong fundamental music education program in the school system I graduated from, so I'm very thankful that we have this opportunity to do this for everyone in the state of Alabama. So let's go to our, our first slide, or second slide, I guess it should be.
Y'all have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't. He's new to us.
Well, the first thing is that we wanted to look at a, a critique and analysis of the current Alabama arts education course of study, and I knew this because I used to be a band director. So I was a band director for six and a half years before I got into the field of, of administration. So we wanted to make sure that the practices and everything that we were doing in the state of Alabama was aligned, so that we can produce top-notch students in all the arts, not just music, not just art, not just dance, but all the arts for all of the students in Alabama. We researched a lot of various different frameworks, as well as from other states, the DOD, we wanted to make sure that what we did would be something that would just not support the students in Alabama, but could become a model for other states to help follow. We engaged our arts and arts community stakeholders, and we got feedback. So it wasn't as if we were just talking to ourselves, we were able to go out and get this feedback from every, everyone else that's in the field, and then we actually reviewed that feedback to help inform the decisions that we make for the boys and girls of Alabama. I'm just going to give you all this flame now, I'm going to say, boys and girls of Alabama a lot, because that's what we're here for, and that helps connect us back to our purpose. With doing this, we also want to look at different grade-level bands, what's appropriate, are we seeing the progression from the beginning to the end with our students? And this is all, all schools, not just the ones that have the affluent programs in the arts, but the ones that have just the very basics and fundamental art program, what can we do to make sure that we show that progression? So our goals were to definitely align our standards and the events proficiencies for college and career readiness. Now, with our, our, our task with the course of study, we have five different disciplines. I know that others, they just basically have one, but we have five different ones. We have dance, we have media arts, music theater, and visual arts. So we have to do those five different disciplines, and also do all grade-level bands for those five. So we have a huge task with the, the committee that we have, and it's a joyful task, because we get to definitely have an impact on all of arts education in Alabama. Next, we wanted to make sure that we integrate it throughout all subject areas and college and career readiness initiatives. Our goal is that we wanted to try to build something just to show proficiency in the college and career readiness. Many people, or many of the students that we have in the field of arts are going to the next level, they make it, fine art scholarships, so we want to make sure that we show somewhat of a proficiency level, so that they can get to that next level. And last but not least, we want to strengthen the frameworks in our elementary grades, strengthen what we have, and we wanted our students to be challenged on all grade levels, all grade levels, students can be challenged in the field. So with our meetings, of course, the first one got canceled due to weather, but we added to additional dates, and in February, we were able to review the research, the current standards, other state standards, we basically did a real, a, a deep dive into what we had, to see what, where we're going. You don't know where you're going unless you know where you are. And so we, we did our deep dive, we looked at the different research, we had a lot of talking, and I don't know if you've all been around a lot of art people, but there's a lot that you have to consider, because we are all very territorial at times, and we want to make sure that our area gets the most. So we, one thing that we really focused on was consensus, as a whole group, even though that I'm a, a music guy, I still want to make sure that, that dance is represented, I want to make sure that, that media arts is represented. So we, we separate, and then we come back and get general consensus, so that's very important to note, that this is not just a one-person show, this is everyone working together. In March, we were able to look at the consideration and consensus of our individual comments from our public review, making sure that, because you're going to have that mom or dad that's going to make sure that they want all these standards covered for their children, and we want to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can. Our next, in April, we reviewed our expectations for structures and quality of state, we planned our alignment, and we even started maintaining a list of sources for the bibliography. So there's a lot of work in the five different disciplines that we have with our course of study, making sure that we put all that into a document, it's a living, breathing document, it's going to be best used for our students. And then in, in April and May, we draft, revise, and review the alignment of standards, and let me tell you, that took some time. We began to introduce our narratives, and us, once again, we went back to our bibliography, dealing with five different areas, I, I can't stress this enough, it is a challenging task, but we're definitely up to it. And we received a lot of help from the committee members, especially the ones that were appointed by the governor. So this is a, a huge effort with everyone working together for our students. So our upcoming meeting, we're going to draft and revise our standards, narratives, and assess and align progressions, and then recommend some expert reviewers to look at our progress. Once again, we don't want this just to be an Alabama document, we want this to be the standard, and we want this to be something that other states can look to, Alabama to be the leader. In July, we'll finalize the draft for public, for public review, and in August, we'll have the consideration of individual public review comments and expert review, revise our documents, and continue to get better, and start preparing our slides to present to you all. We're going to make sure that in September, that we ensure our alignment and finalize the presentation, that'd be a lot of work, thank you, sir. And then in October, we'll make the final edits and practice our presentation, so that we can have it ready to present on November the 14th. Even though this dates, our dates pretty much coincide with the social studies, it is a lot to get five disciplines into one course, but we're really thankful, once again, that everyone's focused in on making sure that we provide the best for the boys and girls of Alabama. And then we anticipate the adoption on December 12th. So it's just a brief overview where we are, this is a, a working document, we want to make sure that we put this out here, because art people were very critical as well, and so we want to make sure that when we put it out, it will be a, a foolproof plan to support the boys, boys and girls of Alabama.
Thank you, board members. Questions? Excellent. No questions.
Thank you, Mike. Where were you a band director?
Talladega County Central High School, it was a little bit of a school in the country, but we changed our show every week, because it was fun.
He's, he's a legend, because I used to come, I used to have all of Talladega County, and I remember very well, and it was all praise and love.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Everybody just really adored you, and this is really fun, Andy knows, my family's been involved in the arts for years, my brothers.
Band directors manage, and I'm a grade administrator. Ed Nichols in Madison City brags about that he, everything he needs to learn, he learns as a band director, and he does a good job.
Yes, I have just a comment, of course, the presentation is great, but I think it would be appropriate for you two that can't touch this. But you did during COVID, I guess.
It was good. It was wonderful.
Thank you, man. I don't, I don't think I've stretched enough today, so.
Was that student produced it all? Because it was, it was. I agree, Marie. I'm so glad you remembered that.
Actually, it was a former, it was a student at another school that had graduated. And I'm real close to my students when I, even I was superintendent. But a lot of my students, they were rappers and they had all these music videos. So I said, "Well, let me call him and I'm going to do my own music video." And so he was actually, he did it no charge. It was just an opportunity for us to have some fun during COVID-19. And we didn't know that it was going to get to exposure, but we posted it and that Monday morning, I was on Fox and Friends. So.
It went viral.
It definitely was a fun time.
It was wonderful.
And I was proud to be your district rep.
I was still watching. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, tell me where you want to go now. We, I mean, we can, I thought this would actually be, you know, our plan was, we were like, oh, we're going to have to really, really, really push to get this far before the lunch break. But we can keep going. There's not a lot more. Maybe, Ms. Nora, tell, tell Leanne where we are, you know, to get right upstairs. So let's just go to the next one. Let me see what these are. The next few are pretty simple. So a Robert L. Morton Award, every year, this CFO who gets an award that's, you know, kind of like the superintendent year that, that they call it.
Number five, sir?
What about five?
Oh, did I skip one? Oh, sorry. Okay, let me go back. Career Tech Course of Study. So these are additions to the current courses study. It's not a new courses study. If you open that, you want to look at it. That, what they've done is add some courses to the course of study. And if you open both of them, you're going to see overlap. So some of these courses can be, can be used to complete the requirements under the course of study for human services. But they could also complete the course of study for, I think it's.
Hospitality and tourism.
And tourism. And tourism. So now not, some of them are just in one cluster and some of them could be in either cluster. So that's why they're two separate resolutions. But it is a series of courses. So the first one, for the benefit of the public, it would be in human services. The new courses would be cuisine and media production, food and wellness, food science, nutrition and food, and then sports nutrition. I don't know if anybody's here to talk about those. Kathy Jones, who we got over there?
I can't talk about it. So in the hospitality and tourism course of study that was adopted in 2022, there were the people in the room already there that could, could write the food courses. So they did. And then they were adopted by you all in that year. Well, when they did, when, last year, when you adopted the human services course of study, these courses had already been adopted the previous year. The courses that are being moved from the hospitality and tourism course of study to the human services course of study are bringing those documents in alignment with the program, program guides for career technical education. So there are some teachers who teach hospitality and tourism who can teach those courses, but not all of the hospitality and tourism teachers are, are certified to teach the courses that are being moved over to human services. So it really is an adjustment to where the program guides in line and communicate better with the school districts according to the, the teacher certification credentials and what is allowed under those program guides.
So you're moving them from one side to the other. Yeah, does it make sense? Because it's, she explains better than I. Sort of started there.
And there were some adjustments made to prerequisites to also bring the, to update with the program guides. This is really some housekeeping that helps career technical education to better communicate with the school districts.
So it's also in a team-up, long-term, I think, to, to do something. We talked about when we started this several years ago, you know, we, many years ago, they did all 16 clusters at one time, which was, that was hard. That's probably been almost 20 years ago now. And they'd never been updated. Nobody wanted to update them because it was so much, so hard to do. So you remember when I started superintendent, we started breaking these apart and doing, so then we'd do four clusters a year to update all of them. So as we come along, doing adjustments to courses of study rather than saying, oh, we're not going to change one until it comes up years later. So you're going to see that more and more. If we, if there's a need to make an adjustment, let's go ahead and make an adjustment midstream rather than saying, oh, no, you can't make any adjustments for four years or something. So it's much more responsive.
To the career cluster concept versus the whole course of study in one.
Yeah.
I would more, more fluid. Well, it's just as different in terms of graduation and.
So they've all been redone now, but you, but we'll be back rather than starting completely over, just adjusting them to say they need to be adjusted. Any questions on those? So the next one, then let me get back for recognitions for, for Danny Higdon. So he is the Tuscaloosa County CFO and has been selected by the Chief Finance Officer's Organization as the Robert L. Morton Award winner for this year. And hopefully, he will be with us. I, I think he will, but you know, July is always a hard time to get people together. So hopefully, he'll be able to be with us in July. If you don't know, a long time, I don't know if David Smith's going to be with us. David Smith's been the director, executive director of that group forever and ever. And he is retiring for like the third time this time, but retiring for real. And their new exec is Andy Craig, who retired from school, public school work, and is now working for ASBO. So, so hopefully, Mr. Craig will be with us also. We were able to go down, Dr. Payne and I, for the, he stayed for the whole meeting. I just went for the morning to kind of recognize David Smith and his retirement last month. And so Mr. Craig will be with us this, this time to do that award. No questions? So Glenn Wood, Dr. Richardson knows better than I do, but, and she's the one who was able to bring this to our attention. So many of you have heard of Glenn Wood. Glenn Wood School does amazing work. It was probably Alabama's first school to deal with children with autism. They, there may have been one before, I don't know, but they certainly have been the biggest, longest consecutive running and most successful. And we obviously have a lot of connections with them. And they, now, they, they do have a campus, a residential campus. They also have day programs. They also assist schools all over the state. So they're turning 50. And this is just a recognition of their 50th anniversary and the great work that they've done across the state. And, and truly, it's, the campus section located in Dr. Richardson's district. She knows that a lot of the people up there. Is there more? You may have more you want to say about it.
Well, basically, just an awesome program. I know even when I was superintendent in Fairfield for a while, we didn't have an autism program, so we would have our students to go there. But many of the school districts who have severe children have to, you know, sign contracts with them. So I thought this would be just a great honor for us to recognize 50 years of service. They started, I think, with 16 and now they serve over 8,000.
So it is statewide?
It is.
Oh, yeah, it is statewide. It's a huge, huge program.
Yes.
And they do, they also do pre-K. It's not just.
They have day, they have residential, they have colleges on the campus. And now there's a push to get those that are higher, higher functioning out into the community. So they have homes out in the community too.
And as former superintendent of Tarrant, they were our neighbors. I drove by them every day on the way home.
And now they're up on Sumer, up from, yeah, yeah, up Sumer.
We used to work with them very closely because when they first started worrying about what to do, we have to have that impact on our school system. They were a wonderful group.
Yeah.
Off of 280 now. That's where they are. Back up to 280.
Keep going with my son. Yeah, sure. I've never gotten to the last hour of the work session before they end it, before lunch. We're there.
We're there, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll keep going then. So I have a quick slideshow and we'll bring up some things and talk about. So if they want to, you can go ahead and bring that up. Charles, it's in your assembly also. It just got loaded this morning. And then I know you've got a hard copy. I think we just printed one hard copy, but if you want to pull it up. But we all, if anybody else who wants to get a hard copy, obviously, welcome to it. Do you not have your, you don't have your device with you? I want to give it to them.
No, I do.
No, 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 no. Here's the hard copy. I'll just look it up. Now, that one got printed yesterday, so it might not be exactly the same. Might have made some things. Okay, so three things I want to kind of really go over. Two of them, board members have asked some questions about lately. So the first one is the after-school programs. There, there was a news story that one of our counties had voted they were not going to be able to do free after-school programs next year. It's not just that county. That's the county that we got the news. This is a matter of Esther. There's not a slide on this. As I've mentioned over and over and over again, I talked to the, to the administrators last week at class. I mean, we are losing a couple of billion dollars in Esther funds in September. And a lot of programs are going to, thank you, sir, a lot of programs are going to go away. Now, I don't want to choose the programs. I would suspect local school boards don't want to choose the programs either. But, but there are programs that are going away, the positions that are going to go away. And that's just a matter of, there's a lot less money for the 24, 25 school year. There will be even less for 25, 26 because some of them are able to do what we call late liquidation. They've held on to some of their funds after the September deadline and spend them all the way up into possibly next March. Depends on the kind of fund. There's a lot of stipulations on that. But some of them will be able to stretch some of their money through most of next school year, but not all of it. And then there are some things, there are some services they can purchase ahead of time. So some of them will, like, some services, they might purchase a two-year contract and so be able to stretch out. So that's why I say we're going to step down. There's going to be less money to spend this year, and there's going to be even less money to spend the next year, and there's going to be much less money to spend the third year. This is one of those situations where the county board looked at, you know, we can't maintain everything. What things are we going to not try to do anymore? And this is about a $2 billion expense for a very rural county with no major cities. And they just said, we can't, you know, we, we'd rather go ahead and now and notify parents that we're not going to be able to do this in the fall so they can be making plans that, that things are going to go from free to paid rather than waiting till August to notify parents. So I think it's very wise. We've, as you may know, we haven't, you know, we, the state started a very small, very small after-school initiative. I said the state, the legislature did. Two years ago, they placed it at early childhood. Last year, they asked us to take it. And so we have taken it, starting for this summer and this next school year. We are the managers of the state's very, very small after-school project. We have hired somebody to manage it, Jeffrey Norris, who was our Teacher of the Year from Oak Mountain Middle School. He's just started. He has already reached out to that district to see if we can help them. Now, the entire state legislative budget for all 1,600 schools, summer and after-school programs, is less than that county needs to run their program. So I don't want you to think that, oh, we're going to start funding. Like, we can give grants, we can help offset and defray costs, and over time, that may grow. But we don't have the money to go in and save one county's program because there's, you know, we got to help across the board. So we'll be, we'll be doing some small grants. We do have, we do manage the federal 21st century grant too. We, we're talking with them about that. But just know, this is going to be an issue over and over and over. All, all the stories are not going to play out in the press, but there are going to be programs cut because there's going to be a lot less money. Now, there are going to be positions eliminated too. I've talked to principals, superintendents, especially superintendents, and actually heard from some teachers whose jobs got cut. They weren't fired, but their position is, say, a reading interventionist or whatever was eliminated, and they've been offered another position. And, and they don't want to go to the other position. I understand that, but, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be cuts. We are going to try to help people softland the cuts, I think. I don't think. I know that I've been talking about this for four years, that the day was coming, you know, and it's, but it's here. And I don't feel, I feel hard for local school boards when I talk to them in two weeks. It's going to be one of my main talking points, that it's going to be really hard to make those cuts. But the boards that don't make those cuts, three or four years from now, are going to be looking at state intervention because they're going to run out of money. They've got to do that unless they can raise local, you know, some of them might be able to do a local tax effort or something like that too, to bridge the gap. We are bridging the gap on some things at the state level. So the legislature, as you know, picked up our summer math and reading camps, which we've been funding out of federal funds. This will be the last year of federal funds. They've already given us the money to do that with state funds next year. In our August discussions, we'll be coming back and, you know, I assume you'll want to ask for that again and perpetually. But anyway, that's, I'd be glad to ask, answer questions about it. You know, we're, that, I know there was one story in the press, but we've actually reached out to lots of superintendents who've been having to make these kinds of cuts. Many of them, this will be the last thing I'll say about it, lesser questions. Many of them are not making all of their cuts now. One particular, I talked to a superintendent, I see some dog heads here, that has, they, they have a good local reserve built up. And this person, not one of the two in the room, said that I have the money that I can kind of stretch it out using local funds over three or four years. As people retire, we won't be replacing them, but we're not going to give out pink slips. So he said, you know, three years from now, I'll have a lot fewer positions, but, unless something changes. But we're not going to just kind of pink slip everybody now. What we're waiting, we're, as people retire, we're just not filling those positions. We talked about this at RSA, in RSA board meetings. I've said it publicly over there that we, right now, we have about 3,000 more employees than we had, between 3,000 and 4,000 more employees in public schools than we had in 2019, 2020. But we have not a lot less. We've got about maybe, you know, the population of children is declining. We've got about 20,000 fewer kids. Well, that's not sustainable long-term. And so I know that that's going to normalize and that number of employees, as the federal money goes away, it's going to come down. It's just the way, it's just the way it is. So, so that's the first point. And I'll go into my slides unless there's a question about that. You want me to? More specific. I want to talk a little bit about the reading cut scores that have also been in the media this week. We've got a lot of media here with us, so that's good. I want to go back and just, this is going to be pretty quick because it's really a review of what we did last year as far as the presentation and then tell you kind of where the next steps are too. But our reading cut scores discussion, another view of the assessment, where we are, and then we'll, there'll be recommendations later. So this slide, 2023 data, not 24 data. You remember, this is the slide I gave you last August to show where we were. And I'm going to really just go through the same thing about how cuts course to develop and so forth. So we had two technical advisory committees and a group of teachers that met and recommended that for spring of '24, we use 435 for the cut score to determine retention for third grade. It wasn't, didn't come from me, didn't come from any of the department staff in the room. It came from our two technical advisory committees and our group of teachers. It is a back, they do that math from here, okay? So there's 473, minus one, minus two. Again, the recommendation of the teachers and the task force was to use this 435. So the question has been, and I've had not many, I think, one principal, maybe two or three teachers have said, how do you get there? Why, you know, why are there, why are there three different scores? Well, first I'll say this, most states don't talk about three scores, though I've talked to plenty of assessment companies and they say that, you know, they don't know any states that are doing retention that aren't using minus two SEM. But they don't talk about it in their public meetings. They just show one number. Maybe that's our fault for trying to be too open, but you know, it is what it is. These are the confidence intervals. Remember, we talked about this last year. And I did recommend that you follow the advice of your. And I did recommend that you follow the advice of your two tech committees and your teachers because the first year we retain kids, to me, it's important that we have 95% confidence that we've got the right number. And that's what this says. So every time, you think about taking the ACT. When you take it, your kids take it, their, their scores are probably going to change. Most, most students don't make a 25, 25, 25, 25, 25. They make a 25, then they make a 26, then they make a 23, then they make a 27. We know that when the ACT, we know for sure, with most tests, the majority of people, if they take it a second time, their score goes up for two reasons. One is they're more familiar with the test. And two is they've been taught more. So you take it as a junior, when you take it again as a senior, you've got another year's worth of learning. Well, in the third grade, we don't have a lot more time we can teach them. We do have a summer program, we'll come to that. And that's why we do summer and we test again at the end of the summer. But because those scores float up and down, what the statisticians tell us and what we know is that with this cut score, minus one SEM, we are 68% sure that we chose the right kids. Okay? Which means we're 32% unsure that those kids, out of cut score of 454, we're 32% unsure whether these are kids are actually the low-grade level or not. Well, that's a big percentage to be 32% unsure the first year you're going to tell moms and dads, we're going to retain kids. That's why, again, every state that I know of, every state that testing companies know of, they start out here where they're sure, 95% sure that they have chosen the right group of kids. If you tested those kids again the next week and their scores go up and down, 95% of them are not going to move outside this bank. Okay? So that's where we went. Appreciate all y'all going through that. Now, we had to go through that last summer. And that's the score that we applied, obviously. You know, that's, I don't know other ways to explain it. It is complex. I know it's complex. But the, you know, we, you, technically, we can choose any score we want to. Legally, we could. But I do have concerns, as I did last year. Well, I mean, I did, the reason we did this last, sorry, the reason I made the recommendation. I have two groups of statisticians separately meeting, not talking to each other, and a group of elementary teachers meeting, and they all say, this is where you should go. If I come to you as state superintendent and say, I'm not going to agree with any of the statisticians or the teachers. I'm just going to choose the number that I want to choose. I think that puts a lot of, of, I don't, I don't want that responsibility. I want to, the reason we have these groups is to give us advice. And if they disagree, it'd be one thing, but none of them disagree. Okay, so that's last year. Let's talk about where we are now, what that, that applies to this year. So this is, you've got a slide that is a, the statisticians explaining what I just explained about confidence intervals and why you use them. We do not, by the way, we go back, we do not use confidence intervals for other test data because they're not high stakes. We apply confidence intervals if we're, if they're high stakes for students. We're talking about telling the mama of an eight-year-old what your child's going to go next year. Well, that's important, that you make sure you're thinking through that and you feel, again, 95% sure you've got it right. Now, our other test data, which we'll release at the July board meeting, our A-CAP audit data. We don't use confidence intervals on that because it's not high sta, well, it's high stakes for the schools because they get a grade on it. But it's not high stakes for a student. So that's why we don't talk about it as much. The other place, sometimes we talk about that is with teacher testing and all. Y'all know that. But we, again, the goal is to work up. Yes, sir?
This is reading. Are we not talking about math as the retention component?
There is no retention on the math. No, sir. The nuance of the bill doesn't have a retention on these. Yes, sir. So, so let's go to here, this year. This is something I want to make sure everybody focuses on. And I, this is where I'm focusing. It doesn't matter if you look at the minus two SEM, which is the current cut score. If you want to go up and look at minus one, if you want to look at the no adjustment score. In every case, our students and teachers are doing remarkably better. No matter which score you look at, the teachers are doing the work that we ask them to do and the students are doing better. So that's, that's, to me, that's the real story. Okay. Where are we here? So if I had asked you, I feel like a teacher now, I love teaching. If I were to ask you, which of these four bars, four-year testing, remember, we changed the test here because we, we went to a more rigorous test on this side. That's the, that's amazing. We went to a more rigorous test and our kids are doing better. But if I asked you, which ones of these bars are the no adjustment? Which ones are minus one SEM and which ones are minus two SEM? It would be a trick question. They are all minus two. They're all minus two. So again, it doesn't matter how you slice it. Our students are doing remarkably better from year to year to year. A lot more growth in these two years than these two years. And we were all shocked by the growth. But it, you know, it's the same, this is the same exact test we gave last year. Okay. Now, this is something else I want to say because I would like to confuse everybody in the room. So I've been asked already, Dr. Mackey. That means that these kids next year, in January of '25, we're going to have new reading NAEP data from our fourth graders. And that means these kids are going to have amazing NAEP scores. Well, they might would have, but these kids will never, ever, 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 ever take the NAEP. The fourth grade scores that you get in January of '25 were administered in January of '24 to these kids. So this, this will not have any impact on the NAEP whatsoever. These kids will never, ever, ever, ever take the NAEP.
So if you compare the 23 scores that will take the NAEP.
Yeah.
They, where were this, where were they? They were in 22 in the third grade. Is that correct?
They were 23, they were in the third grade. And they took the, this, they had ten. These, right. They were 83%. They took, and this is their third grade score, in January of '24, they took the NAEP. And those scores will be released in January of '25. Nothing moves fast in the educational statistics world.
So the 22 scores were the last NAEP ones to have?
No, sir. Because we only give the NAEP every other year and they skip.
So the 21 scores?
No, because they skipped a year because of, because of COVID. None, the only kids in this cohort taking the NAEP are here. The last group of kids we had that would have been subject to the NAEP were over here.
Didn't take it.
And they didn't take it. Right. Because we skipped that year. Now, the NAEP has been given since 1969, every other year in odd years. It was only given to schools that voluntarily took it until, anybody know? 2001, when No Child Left Behind passed, and they said, if you take federal money, you have to take the NAEP. And so until 2001, when people try to look back, you know, do, do whatever, try to do comparisons going back, it was a voluntary test until 2001, actually, 2003 administration. And then all of a sudden, it became, everybody had to take it. And nationally, scores started going down because, just like the ACT. If only the kids going to college take it, then you're going to have higher scores than if you give it to everybody, like Alabama does. But yeah, these other, these other groups, these two groups and this one will never be, we'll never see how they do on the NAEP because it's just given every other year. There is a plan to go back to odd-year administrations. And so we don't think, and so the plan is not to give the NAEP again until 2027. And to go back to releasing the scores within nine months of administration. I know that seems like a long time. This year, they're not going to release the score until probably 12 months. They may get them out in December of '24, but telling us more likely January of '25 because it went to an all-online, completely different format of the assessment.
But Dr. Mackey, even with that, we don't test all of the students.
Oh, no.
All at the same time when the NAEP is administered. And the schools will be different, and so you really cannot compare the two.
That's right. It's just. Only about 3% of our students take it.
Right.
And they, they take, the schools are chosen by a semi, sort of random, not exactly random process.
Yeah.
Exactly. Thank you for that point.
But that's where people who don't know, get it so messed up as far as the NAEP scores and trying to use that as a measurement, it just doesn't work.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. And, and I just want to, I mean, I'm teaching, I thought, I really need to point out that these kids will not, they, because in people's minds, they're going to think, well, they were third graders and took this test. Then we're going to get fourth grade scores next January, so they'll be the same kids. No, they're not. But the NAEP results were baked in the oven two months before these, for these kids, two months before these kids took the reading test. But the results for this test won't be released until 10 months after these results are. It's no wonder the public gets confused about it. It's hard to make a comparison.
So the NAEP will be administered in the even years or the odd years?
So it was.
Because even years have been the norm.
No, no, odd years were the norm. They skipped, so it was supposed to be administered in '21, and they skipped '21 and did it instead in '22, and then they get in '24. And now it is going to go back to odd years, but they're going to skip '25 and go to '27.
Okay, because I, I just received some information saying that it was even years. Is that when they released it?
Well, it's, it is even years now, but the plan is to go back to odd years.
That's what I thought. So it wasn't completely.
No, 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 you're right. It was even years.
Yeah.
And currently, it is even years.
Right.
But the plan is to go back to odd years, but skip '25. And the reason, the, the results, usually, they give the test in January and the results are released the next, usually, September, October of the same year. So it's odd to odd or even to even. But this year, because they changed the format of the test, it won't be released until the winter. That's what they keep telling us, the winter of '25. Well, we don't know exactly when that is. Probably January of '25, possible, that it could be, is, or it could be in December, but winter of '25 is what they're saying. And we'll, as we get closer, we'll, they'll give us a date, I think, when they release. But I just note, it's going to be very confusing to people because they're going to get data that are essentially a year old on a group of kids who now moved on to fifth grade. And as Mel pointed out, only about 3% of the schools even participate. It's a semi-randomized selection, meaning it's not random, but there's some randomness to it, to how they select.
When they call it the national report card, it gives people, they don't understand. You know, when they, when they put that kind of title on it, already they send them down the wrong road for understanding.
And they think every kid takes it.
Oh, yeah, every year.
Next, let me just, oh, this is my, this is now what I want to talk about, our strategic plan and kind of our, where we are next year and start talking about the budget development. Want me to keep going?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a, I know you can't read this, you have a bigger copy with you. And shoot, I think, don't you have it? Yeah, you've got it now. So this is just kind of an update on the Alabama achieves. Did you know we developed that in 1920? It was supposed to be a five-year plan. So as we get close to the fifth year, we felt like it was good to print a new document. We're going to distribute these to superintendents next week and then school board members kind of, just in two weeks or three weeks. And so we wanted, obviously, you to have it first. You'll get a nice bound copy. Those are, are still at the printer right now. The first, yes, ma'am?
You said 1920. I just want to clarify for the press.
2020, 2020, 2020. The year 2020. We started working on it in the 2019-2020 studio, but it was 2020.
Well, we are listening because we have progress.
Yeah, glad you said that.
I've heard it, but I see it.
2020. Oh, yeah. I will probably start shaking, saying it, because we first introduced it to the board in the March board meeting of March 2020. And then proceeded to the world to fall apart the next week. Okay. So just looking at some of our, the achievements that we've had, academic growth and achievement is still our number one goal. I think as we go into this next year, this is going to still be our focus. It's really about doubling down on reading. I am going to come back to the reading cut score too, and what we, what, what we need to do next. We need to double down on reading, double down on math. Again, I'm a little worried about public perception on mathematics because these scores, these are reading scores. But let's talk about the same group of kids. So the, the first math coaches got rolled out in October of this last school year. The kids, and we only put them in about 200 schools, the lowest-performing schools, okay? They took the NAEP, those, those fourth graders took the NAEP in January. So they had the benefit of those coaches for two months. They took the NAEP. And now there's, again, these group of kids, now, they should not math, we don't have math results yet, that's why we don't have that. Next month, we'll have them. But they, so those are going to be reported next January. Well, people are going, some people are going to say, my gosh, they passed that math act three years ago and it's not made, you know, it's not made any difference. Or it's, or maybe it'll be great, it's made all the world a difference. It's going to have very little impact on these kids because only about 10% of them have the benefit of the bill. And they only had it for two months before they took the test. But the test results won't be released until way after that. So just remember that. But I think we, we continue to double down by, within about two years, we're going to have our math coaches fully out there. This year, we're going to deploy several hundred more, so we're going to have more than half of the schools. By this time next year, more than half the schools will have a math coach, K-5 schools. So we just got to continue to double down on that. We got to really look at what's going on in our summer camps, and we'll come back to that. I know some of you asked me about, well, when are we going to look at that cut score again? My recommendation is we talk about it in August, and here's why. I want us to have the summer learning data. So we're going to know in August how many students really, truly were retained. We're going to know how many went to summer reading camp and what their results were. And we're going to know how many were promoted on a portfolio. So by August, we, we don't have that data now. And I think it's just not most prudent to have that discussion until we get all the data. But by August, we're going to have it all. We're going to know how many kids were truly retained. We're going to know how summer, summer camps went, how many kids went, how many took the test, enough of that, how many were able to make the score to move on. And we'll know how many portfolio assessments were used for students to be promoted. And then I think in August, we come back and look at, do we want to move this up? We'll keep going back and forth from, you know, from minus two to minus one. Or, one of you asked, I won't throw anybody on the bus, can we go in between? Yes, you can. You can set, so you might say, you know what, we don't want to jump all the way, this 19 points. Can we go halfway to that? You can set any score you want to. But we'll also have, by then, the benefit of our TAC re-reviewing it and giving us some more input too.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
With 91% and then it says grade level, and you have mentioned grade level.
Yes.
There is some discussion about using that term and whether it's appropriate to use that term. And how you define grade level and whether that's really proficient.
Yeah.
And if you can explain that part because that's part of the overall.
Glad to, glad to. So the, the literacy act itself says that we will have two categories, above grade level and below grade level. And, and so the term grade level is in the act. We have been using the term internally. I know that's confusing some people, sufficiency as opposed to proficiency. Proficiency, remember, those are, you go back, look at the NAEP. NAEP calls proficiency aspirational. Those should be your AB kids. Those should be kids who are, they're on grade level or maybe above, but they're not like right on the line. So these are students, you're saying, we know for a fact these students are reading below grade level.
And how do you define grade level? I know that I'm mentioning this because I know that it has been part of the discussion on Twitter X.
Yeah. So it's, there, our vote, your vote defines what that, that line's. Yeah. So it's, there, our vote, your vote defines what that, that line's gonna be. So you hear three, you know, there's, proficiency is a different thing. Proficiency, we don't even talk about proficiency in this. Next month, when we get our A-CAP summative, we're gonna talk about proficiency, because that's in four, we report that in four bands. We consider bands three and four proficient. The NAEP, remember, is not in four bands, it's in three bands. Everything's different. The NAEP's reported in three bands. They consider the top band proficient, the second band is basic, and the third band is below basic. So it's, it's a different system. People try to make the connection to, to our state level. Almost all the states report in four bands, present NAEPs in three bands. So they consider proficient only that top band. For our state tests, we consider proficient bands three and four. And here, we don't have a discussion about proficiency in reading. Now, principals will talk about proficiency, 'cause they're also looking at other data. But those, when they say proficient, they shouldn't be talking about kids that are anywhere in any of these three categories. Proficient kids are up here. They're reading up here.
Let me just read what is just written.
Okay.
It says, "It's worth noting that Dr. Mackey's slide still stated that ninety-one percent of students are reading, quote, on grade level, end quote, which isn't what the ninety-one percent figure represents. It represents sufficiency, end quote, which is a lower bar than on grade level, which is a lower, which is lower, didn't say lower bar, but it says lower bar than proficiency. Does that make sense?"
Well, it is different from proficiency.
If you're speaking not to me, but?
Yeah, well, so proficiency's up here, proficiency's up here. It's not in it. Nobody who's in one of these three, or if they were in the blue right here, should be considered proficient. Proficient should be kids, you're not even really concerned about their reading. Their, their score is up here, okay? You're gonna have other students that are obviously on the, what I've been saying on the bubble, or they're struggling readers, which is what we got the money for. They're kind of in here. They're, they go up and down, they take the test one day, they might be below this number, they might be below this number. But then they're taking another day, they might be up here, but they're kind of bouncing along in here. Grade level is, by definition of the Literacy Act, grade level, well, below grade level is students who score below four thirty-five. That, that number was set last summer in a vote, and the law just says, students who score in the lowest category are below grade level. If they're not below grade level, what are they? They're either on or above grade level. There's not a, I mean, but we can, we cannot use the term grade level at all in any of our discussions, as far as I'm concerned, except it's in the Literacy Act. I don't even think grade level's a good, a good term, because a lot of people have idea in their head of what grade level means. That's why our technical folks have used the word sufficiency instead. Or, do they read sufficiently to move on? Doesn't mean they're a great reader. I can assure you, if somebody's scoring here a four forty, or four fifty, or four sixty, they're not a great reader, but are they sufficient that with supports, they can move to the next grade? Now, I mean, I, I don't know, anyway, I guess that answers that.
Would it be helpful to somehow note that it's, maybe use the wording that's in the law itself? You know, sometimes people who write legislation and the laws ultimately do not actually know what, what they're addressing specifically.
Well, yeah, we could do that.
So I don't know how that communication can be.
Well, then it would just be below grade level or?
However, you need to look at it so that people better understand it. And I, I was one of those who voted against the cut score, because I had some reservations about myself. But I think the, the main thing is that a lot of it is trying, you're trying to report to a non-education community, and those in the education community, especially those who deal with assessments all the time, know that there's, there's a disconnect. And the communication, the parents, it's difficult for parents to grasp it, most parents anyway, because that's not their world. They may be the best accountant or whatever, but it's, it's still not the easiest task to try to address it. But if there's any way we can simplify it and, and let them know, if you have a complaint, take it to your legislature. Maybe they can redefine it or change it or whatever, or maybe not. Maybe this will be sufficient, but somehow make a note of what the law requires.
So what we, the law requires and what we send letters, we don't, we don't send letters. I'm sure, tell me if I'm wrong, but we don't, no, we don't send letters at all. Districts are not required to send letters to kids who are not, not on grade level. So the letters go to the students who are below grade level.
Having difficulty anyway.
Right. Now, if you're a good principal, I'm sorry, ma'am, let me say this. You're a good principal, you're already, I mean, there's, I've been a principal, I've heard Chanel over there shake. He's been a principal. There's nothing that came out in these scores that should be shocking your principals.
Sure.
'Cause they oughta already know where their kids are, they got that on their kids. And they, and they know these kids that are bouncing right here. They might be really thrilled that Johnny, on the day of the test, made a four forty. And they might be really surprised that Sally on the day, or surprised or disappointed, not surprised, not the right word, they might be really disappointed that Sally, on the day of the test, made a four thirty-four, 'cause they know that on her best day, if she gets a good night's sleep, she can make a four seventy-five. But, but, but on the day of the test, she didn't. So you gotta notify mom, she's gotta go to summer reading camp and try again, or do a portfolio or something like that. But none of this should've been surprising. You've obviously got students who, a few students who are scoring way down here. And the only thing would be a shock is if you got a student that's really, really bright, and they, they're knocking the top of everything, and they score really low. Then that probably tells you something wrong with that student that day. And that's, again, why we have the, the fail sites built in. But we can, we'll work on that. You know, it is hard to communicate to parents. But again, you gotta communicate to parents along the way. Any parent who was shocked when they got a letter that said, "Your child didn't score high enough," however it was worded, "not on grade level." They gotta go to summer reading camp, or they're gonna repeat third grade. No parent should've been shocked, because schools should've already been, been talking to them about what's going on. But we've had a couple of principals who've been like, "I think that, you know, my, the state's tests show that, you know, my, I'm eighty-eight percent of my kids on grade level. I think it's, I don't think it's that good, that high." Well, what's your retention rate? Two percent? So, you know, that's a principal's problem. Okay, so let's go back to this. So we're gonna double down on reading and math. We gotta really focus on summer reading camps, and are students participating? One of our big issues is that students aren't coming. And we'll see this year's data, I don't have enrollment data from this year, but for last year, we know that there's about half of the students, these students, right here, we notified them, they need to go to summer camp. They weren't retained, we notified them, but about half of them didn't come. So if they can't come, they don't come, we don't know what's, you know, we can't do more with them. I think that number will be better this year, because the letters did go out and is real to people. It's interestingly, unless, now, Miss Short may have gotten some, I've not heard anything from, like, we've not gotten one complaint from a parent. So hopefully, they are, yeah, not, hopefully, they're doing what they're supposed to do, talking to their principals and their reading coaches about what their options are. It worries me if we start getting things wrong, 'cause it means they're not getting that communication from the schools. So I think it's good news that we're not getting that. We, you know, obviously, we've got some superintendents that are worried about it. Even though the state number's one thing, at three oh one this afternoon, we're gonna release school-level data. Every school's not at nine percent, y'all.
Yeah.
There are some schools that are struggling still. So, and obviously, we're working with them. There's improvement across the board, remarkable improvement. Schools that were at forty percent below grade level four years ago are up to like twenty-five percent below. But that's still a quarter of their students that are behind. But, but everybody is making remarkable progress, even in our most poor schools in the black belt. The other things I'm making my notes over here, I think it's, it's where you focus on this one and then kind of the next one, I'm sorry, I think I killed it. College and career workforce ready, those two obviously work together. You know, with this, in the fall, early, late summer, early fall, we're gonna be coming to you with code change proposal to implement the new pathways diploma. I know I did that, but I don't know how to undo it. Somebody might have to, somebody in the back may have to help me. Oh, wait a minute. Should be able to do that, get that out of there. Thank you, thank you. The, so we'll be coming with that new pathway diploma. Our plan is to make it, or it's a new pathway to the diploma, I keep saying it wrong, pathway to the diploma by substituting some career tech courses for math and science, or two math and science electives. Our plan is that that will be operational for students in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So really fast. Now, if, most students that want to apply too, because they'll be making their, their four-year plan, and so it'll, it'll actually be down the road before it matters to them. But we may have students who already are, are on the path to be a career tech completer, and their last year, they said, you know what, I'd rather double down on my welding classes and get an additional certification and not take a math and science my senior year. And so that option will be there for them, so why should we delay it and say, well, we're not gonna let you have that opportunity to the twenty-thirties? So we plan on making it operational, not this coming school year, 'cause we got a lot to do, but by the, by the next school year. I've said that to a couple of superintendents, and they were shocked. They were like, we didn't think we'd even have that option for another five or six years. And I said, no, 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 the intention of legislature was to move as fast as possible. The board always wants to move as fast as I can, can move. And I think our intention will have it, to have the code changes done by Christmas, 'cause you know, it takes months to do. And then, when they meet with students in the spring, making their plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that'll be operational. Some of them are probably listening and either gasping or cheering, because they've not said that publicly to anybody yet. Computer science and data science. You, you, this morning, started a process on that. We're gonna, again, double down on that. Computer science is changing faster than anything I know, and a lot of that is because of AI. But it's not just because of AI. As you know, the chips are getting faster and faster. More and more things are becoming computerized. It's, it's remarkable how quickly communications happen now, and I know you already, already know that. But, but it's just getting faster and faster and faster. And so our students who graduate have to have a grasp of not just how to, you know, how to use a word processor, but how the coding is done and how computer science works. They won't all be computer scientists, but they gotta understand that world, because it's taking over everything from auto mechanics to, to architecture. Everything is, has a computer science base. And I think if I'm a little panicky about anything, that's it, because it's almost, you almost can't move fast enough to keep up with what's happening right now with computer science. Same way with data science. Data science, obviously, related to computer science, but, but it's not always. It's also about reading charts and graphs, about understanding things. We just talked about, I mean, this is, you know, what we just went through, I, we're, we're talking about it, obviously, on a high level, but this is graduate-level statistics, that people go to school for six and eight years to learn how to give us these scores. And, and we're, but, but we got, we got parents who have GED that we're asking them to, at least on a basic level, understand it. So as we prepare students, we have to think about data science. How are we preparing them to understand the charts and graphs and, and numbers that are presented to them throughout their life? So I see those two really overlapping. Our new pathway to the diploma, computer science and data science, making sure we have data literacy throughout the curriculum. I know we require it, you know, we, we, Dr. Liter, Dr. Liberty, Dr. Reynolds brought up the financial literacy, but, and we do require it in a course in high school to graduate, but you know, if the first time, we can't wait till ninth grade, the first time we talk to a student about financial literacy. So we gotta make sure we continue to build those things more and more in our standards.
Dr. Mackey, which leads me to this concern about, I remember when we implemented the four-by-four, and that was before the legislature did any, the board, the board did, and it was applauded across the country. When we were overseeing the two-year colleges, we had the discussion about the fact that Auburn University and the University of Alabama and all of these, every college had to offer lower-level math and, and I'll, and it was really low. And the assessments, even in the engineering programs, reflected the fact that students were not prepared, not just ill-prepared, but not prepared to go into these areas where they thought they had done so well, because so many of them had the grades and, and everything else that they thought prepared them. As we look at changing to this new path, my big concern, having been through the other and seeing the results that were actually positive, especially in four-year colleges, we saw more students going into the four-year college realm and going into areas, the student areas, as people like Paul Bretham. As the, as we move through this, my big, my big concern is lowering the standards across the board, especially for those students in areas where it's already depressed, but we have now been able to offer through various means, access problems and so forth, things like AP for that, that student who needed it and wanted it and could do it. And when you start lowering standards, a human tendency is to kind of go instead of going up. And for so long, we were talking about expectations and how if we expected more, then we would receive more. And as we saw that happening, now we're looking at a different route. And it's not to say that we're lowering expectations for the students who are going into different paths. But I do have that concern. Will schools decide, you know, it's too expensive to have AP programs, even though we have the AP programs, the organizations like A+, but that's a huge concern of mine. As we lower the requirements, the four years actually allowed a lot of those students who could not, as you know, grasp algebra and geometry, to take everything that was required, but also extend it to the point where they were able to accomplish what they otherwise could not do.
So I'll be glad to address that. So we, we have had some, not a lot, but some pushback on the raising of standards as much as we did in twenty-twenty-one. So some of you may not remember, but Ms. Bell reminded us. So when, when the four-by-four came in, and the state board said, and?
That was in ninety-five.
Ninety-five, we're gonna require four, for math, for social studies, for English, for science. Really, the only ones that were added to were math and science. And the stipulation was, well, I mean, it is what it is. Until twenty-twenty-one, you had to have four math and four science, but you can count Algebra I as two maths, and you can count science as two sciences. So, so basically, you could, and you could count geometry as two maths. So you could take just Algebra I and geometry, but spread it out over Algebra I-A, Algebra B, Geometry I-A, Geometry B. So really, they were getting two math, we were giving them four math credits for two years of math. In twenty-twenty-one, when we changed the standards, I think I probably stood here and said, we ain't, we're not doing that anymore. A math class is a math class is a math class. And we, and I mean, that's a huge, we, we did, we made a, a leap and a bound and raised the standards a lot in twenty-one with the new math standards and said, Algebra I, you have to take, if you're taking Algebra I, you have to take Algebra I. You can't drag it out over two years and pretend it's two courses. Now, the problem, of course, has been, you do have a group of students that really struggle through those classes. So what they will now be able to do is say, well, I'm back, I'm at the same place I was in from nineteen ninety-five through twenty-twenty-one, twenty, actually twenty-two, 'cause the standards, you know, take a couple of years to go into effect, that I still only have to take, have to master Algebra I and geometry. But I can't drag that out for four years now. I had to do that in two years, like it's. I had to do that in two years like it's supposed to be done. And then the other two years I can focus on a career field. So you're right. I mean, what, what we've done is massively raised the standards, but we're only catching up with what most states were. There were a lot of states that were not, I mean, I don't know any other states who are allowing people to take algebra one and call it two courses. It just, you know, but when I, we did that for, you know, for almost 20 years, from 95 till 22.
Well, not quite 95, it started after 95.
So, um, so we're not, so, so it is a big deal. And you're right, when you start really raising the bar on people and then our principals and counselors had to go ahead and say, okay, I've been counting on Johnny being able to really, to only take algebra and geometry, but call it four math credits. The state board said, I can't do that anymore. What am I going to do? So this will give them an opportunity to say, well, you're still going to have to do that. But then rather than taking, um, you know, taking trigonometry and calculus, we're going to give you an opportunity to go into, to apply those into an applied course in career tech. So I think people are really excited about it. I've not heard, um, much negative, but to your point, it will take explanation. All of this stuff is, you know, you got to explain, got to explain, got to explain.
In your recommendation, Dr. Mackey, as the leader, do you see this as a lowering of standards?
Oh, no, it's raising the standard because we're going from teaching
Because I think Ms.
Two classes of science and calling, no, two classes of math, four class, we, we're calling two math classes, four years of math. And we've, and, oh, no, no, it's the
No, no, I can speak for myself. What I was asking was a question to see what your answer would be.
Okay.
Because I am in, I am in touch with a lot of the educators out there who present both concerns. A lot of them are concerned that they will lose a lot of the AP opportunities. And then, and I'm sure you're hearing the same thing. But I can say personally, what I was asking for was your answer.
Yeah.
And my person, you're hearing the same thing.
I've not heard that. But now if we see schools that are dropping AP courses and those kind of things,
Ms. West.
We will certainly look into that, but I've not heard that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Reynolds.
Yes.
First of all, I commend you, whatever my last thing is.
Literacy.
My apologies. You're right, this is a very, this is a very detailed presentation. Very excellently well done and very difficult to understand for everyone, even as a quasi statistician. And I appreciate that. I also appreciate where we are going forward and the whole idea of the four by four. Look, I've got children that took algebra one in the seventh grade.
Yes, sir.
So the whole idea of four by four, to take four years of mathematics at the high school level, when you've had geometry in the eighth grade, is a complexity. As a superintendent, I had to deal with that. And AP courses, the children have to pay for it. It's not free to take the exam, to take the exam, excuse me. Allow me to speak, please. I respect you. But the whole, there is a more, as a 50-year educator, I have some opinions. But the whole concept of AP classes and paying to take the test to get college credit and that competing with dual enrollment, I've dealt with that as a family. I deal with that as educator. I deal with that in my environment with all the post-secondary people. But this is an excellent presentation. And going forward, as we get the data to examine where we go with the cut score, regardless of my vote last year, I'm looking forward to where we go. And whether we talk about 91% or 71%, my issue is what happens to those children in the fourth grade. We did put some budgetary money in to accommodate those children who were retained or in the, in the, in the gray area. And we have to recognize what this board did, what you did, what our staff did in putting remedial money in for the fourth and the higher grades. And that's where we stand. I know anecdotally, it will take us several years to catch up and find out what the results are, positive and negative of all our decisions. That's where I'm concerned about those children. Because we dealt with grade level, we great deal with sufficiency, and we even deal with another monster in the neighborhood in the room that we all know what's called grade inflation. And the problem I have dealt with more profoundly in my own, with my own children and with children that I have with is the concept of grade inflation. That the children, children will come along. We have children that I know, I had one colleague talk about, who've got all A's and they can't make 14 on the ACT at the high school level. And that's something as educators, we recognize is probably more se- serious than some of the four by fours or some of the other discussions. And I apologize for my colleagues because I know they're hungry. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is more important, actually.
So to that, grade inflation is an issue. There's no question about it. I mean, I don't think any states, Alabama included, would even look at doing a retention test if there was not the belief that there's grade inflation and those students are moving on who really, who made the grade, but they're really not ready to move on. And then as we've talked about before, that becomes more of an issue, the more grades you get. Mr. Schnell talked about teaching high school social studies, but you know, those, sometimes that compounds and you have your teaching high school social studies to a kid who's really reading on a fourth grade level and they're not reading on a high school level. So they have a hard time managing to keep up.
My band directors and music people will tell you they teach more math than some A B class.
That's true. That is true. I, I wish I could do some music. I wish I could dance like Dr. Lee too.
He's good.
The other thing, I'm really close to the end. I don't, I don't want to come back. So the, so the other thing that we do have to focus on with this, in this area, is that closing that CCR, the college degree readiness gap to graduation. Remember that's gotten closer? Graduation rates now are right at, I think, 91% and our CCR rate's about 84%. But starting in 26, 27, which is really, really soon, then you have to have a CCR to graduate high school. So that, I can tell you, that gap is going to be zero soon. Because if they don't have their CCR, they're not going to graduate. Even though the state gap, you know, statewide, we're really doing remarkably well. But when we look at individual high schools, we still have some high schools that have large gaps in there. So in most of the case, the problem is about identifying enough programs for those students. So Ms. Bell mentioned AP. AP's one way. We're trying to get more AP courses in our poorer areas of the state. So they have those opportunities. More dual enrollment courses is obviously way two, working with the two-year and four-year colleges to try to get more dual enrollment courses into schools. Um, but a lot of it is also going to be done through career tech. So how do we let, get more students to credential through their career tech courses? Um, the school I mentioned in Baldwin County, that's a big initiative for them is trying to focus on getting, they want every student at that school to graduate with really multiple credentials and not just focusing on one thing. Um, we, so we're still working on that. We, we've had some schools that, well, that's how you can say this. Some schools haven't focused on that number as much as they should have. Now that it's a requirement for graduation, they're focusing on it much more. So we're going to see that, that, um, trajectory gets steeper really fast. It got steeper this year. It'll be more so next year, I think. But, but I do think we're going to get to the point where there's going to still be a little gap in there and students, we've got to close that gap or those students, or the graduation rates going to drop. Because in 26, 27, if the CCR rate's 87%, the graduation rate's going to be 87%. Because that's why, that's what it takes to be a graduate. Um, I want to mention a couple of other things that are kind of budgetary issues as we go forward. So we talk about our educators. I mentioned this morning earlier that we got about 104,000 people now. That's, that's not just teachers, that's employees on the payroll. And I do think that we're going to see that go down closer to 100,000 like it was pre-pandemic. May not go all the way back, but it's going to drop. So we have to think about making sure we have, we continue to work with our higher ed partners, with the alternate, um, organizations, whatever we, we got to get more people in the pipeline and better qualified than ever before. That's going to be a lot of the discussion here when we talk about highly effective educators. So three big things. Foundations of reading test, we just administered. You saw those results from first-time test takers through multiple test takers. Again, I remind you, we don't get results for the people who don't pass it. But we know the institution's first-time tech, you know, scores, we want those to go up. All the deans are very well aware of that. Um, I know they had a program last week with higher ed folks. Ms. West was able to go serve on the panel to, to talk about how we get higher ed doing even more and more and more. More people in the programs coming out, better prepared. The foundations of math test will be a big game changer for us. Because one of our issues now is we have a lot of elementary math teachers who have not had enough coursework in how to teach math to elementary kids. Now, they may have had three levels of college algebra. But when you're teaching third grade math, you may not need to know three levels of college algebra. The gap is, what our, what our task force has identified, the gap is not that they're not getting enough math or that they can't do math. It's that those, those procedural courses, so my, my higher ed people, I've lost my word. It's the pedagogy of teaching math. And so we've got to get more of those courses in. And that foundations test will be more designed toward that. How do you teach math to these students in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade? And I think that will, that's going to have remarkable outcomes in the long haul. But again, just like I talked about the night results, it is not going to happen next year. We got, we got to get the standards approved. We got to get the test in place. We got to get the new programs redesigned in the colleges. We're trying to do all of that at one time, but it is truly like that old adage. We are building the plane while we're flying it. We can't stop and say, well, we're not going to teach you kids math until we get this all redesigned and then we'll start again in 28. No, we got to, you know, we're, we're changing it as we move forward. And thanks to our higher ed partners for doing that. And then the third thing that is going to be really big as we talk about our highly effective educators is the new principal leadership mentoring act. Very excited about that. As you know, principals can make up to an extra $10,000, plus if they're in a distressed area, another $5,000. So up to $15,000 bonus for principals and up to $7,500 for assistant principals who commit to more rigorous professional development. And I've told our folks, Ms. Martin's heard it so many times, I'm surprised she didn't shut the door when I come down the hall, that we've got to, she does, we've got to focus that new PD on these things. For elementary teachers, it's got to be, like, we need our principals to, when they walk in a room, they have got to know good reading instruction. They've got to know good math instruction. If a teacher's not doing it well, they've got to know how to, how to correct the teacher and help make sure they get in the right place. In high school, the same way. They've got to know instruction. And so I'm all about principals going for all kinds of development. But the things I'm focused on, if we're going to pay them a $15,000 bonus, they better be instructional leaders.
Ms. West, may I make one final question to Dr. Mackey?
You may.
Dr. Mackey, we missed Dr. Hull.
Yes.
And we've enjoyed his leadership and your policy, CTE. Are we in a position to, to affect?
Bring you a name in July.
You're going, oh.
I'm working on it. Bring you a name in July for a new assistant superintendent.
That is great, thank you, sir.
There's a chance it might get delayed to August, but I don't think so. I think we'll have your name in July.
I'm very happy about it.
We got a really good applicant pool, um, and we're already working on that process.
So back to what you were saying with mentorship with these principals, we want them to be laser focused on what will really impact our children.
Right, and there's really, there's, there's two, there's, well, there's three main prongs to that. I'm not going to be the best at explaining it, but, but the principal leadership mentoring act really has three things. Every principal has to increase their professional development and they have to have a, an approved professional development plan. And one of the goals, this is new, for the first time ever, one of the goals in their professional plan, professional learning plan must be student focused, student achievement focused. So they have to focus on student achievement and growth. Not saying that they didn't before, but it was not required. One of their goals has to be.
And laser focused.
Second thing is new principals will undergo mentoring. And class is working, is sub, doing that piece for us. They are identifying retired principals, good retired principals. There will be a training program for the mentors and every new principal will have to go through the mentoring program to get their, to, to get their bonus. And then the third piece is a, a principal's academy. So that's something that, um, Missouri is the, is the big kind of national spotlight. They've had a principal's academy for a while where they, they, they do some, not just going to conferences and all, but they work with a cohort to do some focused PD. It's more, um, more about leadership, how to provide leadership in the building. And so these come online a piece at a time, but eventually all of those pieces will be in place.
And Dr. Mackey, um, with the new laws regarding discipline and so forth, I've mentioned on the side to Mrs. Seidler that sometimes there are students who they move through the class, the grades because they are discipline problems. Um, not often, most really good teachers are not going to do that. But at some point, um, I've had teachers share the stories about certain students. And I assume that's part of not only the principal training, but a component of the overall changes that are part of what the legislature passed. And I know a lot of that deals with the higher level grades, but the discipline is part of that whole process, obviously.
Yeah, so, um, so each superintendent has to designate a person in each school who is the primary discipline area. I don't, that's part of the law now. Um, I hope we didn't have any schools where the superintendent had not said somebody's in charge of discipline, but if they did, now it's the law. Um, they, uh, there's, there were three different bills that dealt with that. So we're going to talk to superintendents about them next week. We're still kind of working through some of that. You'll be seeing probably at the, well, almost for certain at the July work session, a model, um, a model policy for the student, the teacher bill of rights. We had, the board has to adopt a model policy. Um, and that bill says that, that there's very, it's very strict reasons. There's five reasons or three reasons in the law that a teacher can just immediately put a child out of their room. Um, the principal can't put the child back in the room until the, um, until they've been disciplined. So we don't want people to think that kids are never going to be back in the room. They have to be, that, once they're disciplined, they go back in the room. Um, they're, the teacher cannot just put the child out though unless they have followed a disciplinary plan that was approved by the principal. And so the, each principal, each school principal will have to do a disciplinary plan, which may include things like, you know, contacting the parent, doing, um, in, in classroom detention, whatever, there are lots of different things. If they've gone through that whole series and the student's still doing the misbehavior, then they can say, well, you're not, you're going out of my class until the principal disciplines you. For those of you who have worked in schools, this is not very different from the way we've always done it. Um, and then, but here's the difference. Now, once the principal administers the discipline and puts the child back in the room, if the teacher thinks that the discipline should have been more severe, they can appeal to the, their local school board, not, they can appeal the principal's decision, skip the superintendent and go like, straight to their local school board for a ruling about whether the principal made the proper decision or not. In the meantime, the child though, because of federal law, cannot be kept out of the classroom. Um, it's going, there's, there's going to be a federal lawsuit over this, I can assure you. This is coming.
You're some school.
Federal lawsuit coming. Um, okay, I want us to, I want to say this, in, um, in August, two things, I promise. In August, we're going to have to really talk about the budget. We're going to talk about those cut scores. We're off to really talk about the budget. Because not only is it going to be less federal money next year, the state economy's really slowing down. Growth last month was negative for the first time in many, 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 many month cycles. Now, that doesn't mean we're out of money, but it means that when you think about like this principal bill, which I'm very high on, obviously, that's a $30 million new cost to the state that starts this October that never goes away. Um, we've got a lot of other new things that have been started that, that never go away. I don't, I don't see that legislature, unless I don't, I don't see that legislature, unless they come up with new revenue sources, is gonna be able to continue to roll out big programs like that. Because there's so much we have to sustain, and we don't, I don't want them to, you know, the old phrase, Rob Peter, Pape Hall, I don't want them taking money away from our summer reading camps and the things that we know we need to be doing. So, so I think we're gonna have to have, we always have hard discussions around the budget, but in some ways, it's gonna be different this year, because there's gonna be less money to talk about. And then the, literally, the last three years or four, every time somebody had a great idea, well, not every time, ninety percent of the time, if somebody had a great idea and the legislature didn't provide funding for it, we had Esther Fons. We could go, we could also go to the kitty and get some money, but that, that won't be true next year. So it's gonna be a more focused discussion. And then the other two things that are policy, that I think we've got to double down on and have hard discussions, is get cell phones out of schools and get kids off social media. Now, that's, social media is a problem, and there are states now starting to deal with that. That's not something we as a board can do, but I think we have to, to, to talk about whether we wanna have influence on the legislature, to talk about getting cell phones out of our schools and getting kids off social media. As you know, there are states that have said kids under, I think, fourteen cannot have social media accounts, and I'd, I'd vote for that today. So those are gonna be hard discussions, but I think we really have got to focus on those things. It goes back to Ms. Bell's point, discipline. I promise you, we hear more discipline complaints based over those two things than anything else. And everybody who's been able, every system that's been able to run the gauntlet and get cell phones out of their schools have been able to improve their discipline scores thirty-five, forty, forty-five percent. It's unbelievable how discipline changes by students not having access to cell phones. So I probably gonna get shot, I'm sure I'm gonna make all the headlines, that's why I said it, because I wanna, I wanna have a discussion about it.
We have the resolution in support of your position.
We need it, yes, ma'am. So that's it.
That was it. I don't know, that was really good.
Board members, we've got a little bit of housekeeping before we break away, so please see Ms. Nora and turn in your old badges. I believe she let you know that, that she needs those today, so.
Which one is the old, the big one or the small?
The one that says board member on it.
The large one. The big one is the old?
The one that says board member on it.
Just big or small?
And I also need these calls signed for those who have devices.
Got it, we're, we've signed. We'll still have lunch upstairs.
Yes, ma'am.
Any of you that need to go in, obviously, we'll miss you, we'll be together. Don't forget that our next meeting is on a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
Not a Thursday, so be sure and make that adjustment into your calendars, and I hope you all have safe travels. Truly appreciate all of our guests today being here and staying in the room for this extended meeting, but these were important remarks that needed to be made. There's been some confusion in the public, and we always want to operate with complete transparency and integrity in anything that we present to the public. So, excuse me, so sorry, excuse me. So we wish you all the very, very best and safe travels, and we are adjourned.